Welcome everybody. Sorry about that.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion on the floor to approve the minutes by Don, can you give a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening. We have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Scott, you're aware of?
One addition.
One addition, okay. Did you want to put that?
Sure, that might administer it.
I'm gonna put it in your administrative book. Okay. Damn.
Just your first looks.
Can't beat that, good looking guy.
I'm telling Joyce.
If there isn't any other additions or corrections to the agenda, the student being only the motion to have it approved.
I make that motion.
There is a motion on the floor from Stephanie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Piers Lions, I see they have their Oktoberfest parade permit and another thing on here. Need formally approve their parade permit. They get their, Bob, they typically will get the DOT permit too.
So that is our.
This is how it's in there.
Okay.
It goes to Richard.
Okay. Can we get a motion to have that approved?
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor, Gina, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Don, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. There is our Oktoberfest committee sponsorship request, is that our annual donation?
Correct, not Oktoberfest, actually I think they, I was looking back, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but if you look into the next page of your packets, it shows what we have spent so far this year. But just looking back, I'm not a hundred percent sure, don't quote me on this, but didn't find a donation last year because the year prior, they requested more due to the fireworks, so I don't think they requested.
I think that they came and they said that they weren't going to, because.
They weren't going to. I knew there was something to that.
Because we've been so generous and things, so they didn't ask for it last year, I believe.
We failed sixty-two more budget, but we're still landing.
You don't know how much we gave?
Three thousand.
Not bad.
We gave two thousand towards, we gave two thousands towards fireworks and a thousand to this, that year.
That almost been a thousand.
Is there an issue with that one, I think you guys, was there an issue of foundation of cluster four during the year?
It was, it was back in February.
Is there any other annual ones we know that are coming in around then?
I don't. There might be usually like Saint Nick Night, they request five hundred dollars.
For what?
Saint Nick Night.
You know, other than some smaller ones like that, I think that's what we have coming.
So we'd be probably okay to donate that, uh, officer.
Make motion that we donate a thousand dollars to, for the Oktoberfest.
Motion. Oh, I'm sorry Steph, there's a motion on the floor from Stephanie, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have our inch, uh, air exchange system, I'm sorry for this, Pierce Senior Center. Nobody had talked about that during our last workshop. Bob, do you have anything to add to that?
Is that the air conditioning for the whole building as well?
No, not only air, just the air change.
Well, it's on two bits here.
Right, but they're both together on here, that's why.
Yeah, we tabled the second one.
I guess just an update on the heating and air conditioning system at City Hall, so last week Theo and Heating and Air were, Theo and Heating and Roofing were in City Hall working, and the air conditioning part of the system is up and running and functioning well. Um, so it's two systems, one for this side of the building, the other for the senior center. And this side of the building, which is doing up worse.
Within a half hour, I mean, it was.
It just responds, just like, it's really been great. That side of the building struggles a little more with the air conditioning because of the refrigeration units. And then just even the pilot lights, the stove is hot and then when they cook. But I just said overnight, you know, that building can come back down, and then while they cook until it's gonna kind of eke up, but then it can't cover. So the makeup air system, I never did touch base again with John Theo until see if his price is still good, this was in, on, uh, March second, to quote it, us the price. I would like to see kind of how the building functions first, get a couple ninety degree days, that doesn't necessarily have to do with the makeup air system, but he did put a couple ducts in the basement to give the basement some air for the water heaters to vent better. So he's got some heating stuff to wrap up, I'd kind of like him just to wrap that up and then kind of go through the building one more time and make sure that we're doing things right.
I agree with you, Bob, as a matter of fact, and I'm just looking, um, you know, we're like almost six and a half months into the year, you know, we should wait till after the first of the year and just see how everything is working and then make a decision on whether or not we want to go with an air exchange system.
Did they, you know, have they contacted the extra people about getting more funding?
I'm sure they're working on it.
That would have them, yeah, we're gonna work on that, so we might, we should probably wait anyway, just to see what else they come up with.
Sure, sure, that's a good idea.
Otherwise, put the carton for the, for the horse to pay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See what they come up with, more cash.
I guess at a minimum right now, I just want to make sure that the water heaters are renting properly and it's.
We're not backed up with our appliances, yeah.
We get rid of the negative, uh, air part.
One thing we did truly locked out, there's an exhaust fan, I'll call it a bar fan, going out the south end of the building. That was just strictly for trying to get some heat out of the kitchen, and I had the electrician just disconnect that because all it's doing is sucking our air conditioning out. So right now, it's only the fan above.
The exhaust hood for the, for the stove.
That hood.
Yeah.
So I think that's gonna help.
So if we cut down on, yeah, we cut down on, on CFM going out, it's gonna help, yeah, definitely. Okay, sounds good, thanks Bob. You guys okay with that? Uh, Finance Committee, um, I think Scott's got that a little down here, um, we're trying to get together and start to work on our, uh, two thousand seventeen fiscal year budget. Um, Scott, did you have a time or meeting you wanted to do that?
I guess that's up in the air, I just wanted to make sure that we are aware, first off, that Finance Committee is starting to get it for, for budgeting, um, where we've entered in through, or up to June, for our budgets, for our budgets, so we can start, we're in our process of probably doing each year. Uh, but I guess I just wanted to touch base with three on the committee and see what dates we should leave for, what, um.
It's up to you, it's up to you guys, I think, for reasons we'll talk about a little later in the meeting, I guess I would like to try and get that up in goal as soon as we can and try and get that to look at the preliminary numbers in place for the council.
So something maybe, maybe even Wednesday night? Wednesday thirteenth?
Fifteenth, that's Wednesday.
Wednesdays at fifteen, can you do it on Thursday?
Yes, that'd be good afternoon, yeah, that'd be perfect, we're ready until the next meeting.
Okay.
Thursday, yeah, um, you're gonna be, um, Thursday afternoon, five o'clock, work.
Nope, because that's based on, I've got the home to do, to do yet, not to know when we're there, five thirty. Is that right?
Well, we can.
Or you guys can get started.
We could get started, Linda, and just, okay.
Here as soon as I can.
Okay, so it's five o'clock, right? Okay.
So Thursday at five.
We'll have to have the radio on too.
Yeah, yeah. Um, next item we have on our agenda is our EDA revolving, uh, fund loan policy updates. We had a public hearing here at six o'clock this evening, um, didn't have a whole lot for, for turnout, but, uh, Scott, do you want to just kind of give, uh, the community a quick overview of what we went through and everything, and we'll just go from there?
So our EDA, our EDA program with the city is actually, it's our economic development authority. Um, with that being said, we had to make some changes to our EDA with our revolving fund loan policy, we had a, our current policy was more vague with not a lot of details for some of the projects that we have coming up in the future with the city. So we decided to move forward and update the policy, have more, kind of define more of the guidelines that are in our policy, so we have more opportunity for businesses moving in. So we made some changes to our policy, we added some things to make things more clear and understanding, and give us more opportunity for businesses in the future. With that being said, we, we made some changes to the policy, we also added a business assistance application to, uh, we did have an application, but we just updated it, made it more, more understanding and detailed for our, for the members that apply for EDA assistance.
Do you guys have any questions, or in the public hearing, or, or anything like that? Um, will formally need to adopt those changes to that policy? Correct, so we believe a motion to have that approved.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor from Don.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried.
We need to do one to repeal.
The old one?
Well, it's kind of in here.
Yes.
It ended the attorney one?
Yeah, it's in it.
Repeal the previous policies lying in here, I make the motion that we repeal the previous policies concerning EDA.
There is a motion on the floor from Mike, can we get a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Can we accept the, the application, the business assistance application as well?
Okay, and go down as part of the actual, um, policy, so we'll do that separately, just saying, Scott.
I, yeah, I think that, because if we ever have to make changes separately, we make changes at EDA.
We don't have to change the policy, we can change the application portion of the, just.
Change that application process.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the new business acceptance application form for the EDA.
There's a motion on the floor from Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Industrial Park Lot Five, that is concerning, uh, Kenko Drywall, Ken, Ken Coles. Scott, you're aware of that one?
Alright, so, just grabbing my, 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 it's here. We had, um, it was last week, told you we met as EDA board, we went over some things, um, Ken Koalsig with Kenko Drywall approached us in regards to looking for an opportunity to build within the city. Um, Lot Five is what we have available, I think there was some other interest in Lot Five, but with some of the details that involved, between the two, there was a lot more opportunity for employment and things like that, and there was, they're very understanding between the both of them. But with that being said, um, Kenny requested a first rate refusal to Lot Five. There is also, and so I prepared the document tonight for Lot Five as a rate refusal. He's looking for additional space, if that is a possibility. There is, there was currently a rate refusal on Lot Four, um, that is up for renewal, so we have to start negotiating with that, but also he even brought up the, Ken, with Ken Coles, brought up the fact that even if the lot would be split, he would be open for that, or however, just to get some additional space. So, very open and willing to different ideas, um, but I think, you know, some of the numbers that he brought forward, the number of employees that he employed within the community.
Very impressive, yeah.
It was very impressive, and it was a good opportunity for the city.
And for that business to keep expanding as well.
So.
The other part of the lot is for parking lot then, or building, or what?
He, the size of the building alone, um, is gonna be like a hundred by a hundred, or, I mean, it's gonna be a big building, plus office space, plus then he's got product, you know, his equipment and stuff like that. Um, granted, he said his equipment is mostly off his, on other sites, but when it is back, he needs space too. But also, looking at the numbers of how he's grown in the past, next one of years, looking into the future, I think it would be reasonable to consider giving him extra space for that reason of growth.
Why don't we, you know, if we're gonna do a lot split there, I'll take it through planning, so we can look at all that.
Well, we need to talk to Tom first.
Talk to Tom.
See what, I guess we haven't, we haven't talked about that for a year with him, so I guess maybe we don't know.
Yeah. Why don't we do that?
How soon would Ken Coles wanna, I mean, if they're asking for a first rate refusal?
I think what it's coming down to is he's in the process of talking with it, where he currently is and things like that, so he for sure wants a rate refusal, I, we have discussed that he's gonna actively move forward when the time would be right, as long as things fall into place. So there's still some details, but he would, I think, you know, we saw.
Yeah, 'cause typically. Are we looking, I didn't look at this, are we looking at a one year or a six month?
Well, typically what they do is, is one year, yeah, they have one year to start construction, not they have to commit.
Well, that's when they buy it, they got a year.
Right.
First rate refusal, we're gonna give him a year, so, you know.
Yeah, it's the same thing, from the time we do it, they have a year to start construction.
No, to a year to buy it, to first rate a refusal, not construct, because they don't have it on first rate refusal.
Right, right.
But I guess that's just in communicating with him, and I think if he doesn't know, I don't think it'll,
It's gonna go.
It's gonna go quicker, if things fall into place, things a little quicker.
Why don't we get a hold of, um, personal ones for, Scott, let's try and do that this weekend, we'll get some stuff.
Or it's not a first rate refusal also.
Yeah, and I don't know when that would expire, you know, or.
Do you have, he said he.
We would like to pull them all. I think it's, it's a little.
I would make a motion that we, uh, um, go with the first rate refusal with Ken Coles Drywall on Lot Five.
There we go. There is a motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Yeah, he's got, uh, he's got himself a nice little business going, and, uh, yeah, it'd be nice to be able to, uh, get some buildings in town, I said, gosh, do you remember what his employment numbers were? Between regular employees and local subs, he uses.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. That, that's just, that's just his own, not to mention additional subs, right?
I think it was for sure eight of his own, and they're all employed local. And then he had, I think, eight subcontractors, and only one of those subcontractors were from out in the community.
Yeah, so he's all. Don, we have anything on the permit?
We do, we have one for James Van Stone, uh, to build a porch, three sided porch, onto a three season porch, on his home with, through Lancaster, and, um, we just basically have two different stipulations, one is that, uh, he can't go any closer to the alleyway, uh, than what is there, and he had said that he was going to build actually right on the deck in the backyard, and he just, they closed it. Otherwise, that's it.
No restriction.
No restriction.
Can we get a motion to have that approved?
I'll make that motion.
There is a motion on the floor by Stephanie, can we get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, we will get into some department reports, uh, Bob Wutumba.
Hey Bob. Just wanted to give a council an update on the mosquito spring, I'm planning on starting that tomorrow night, Tuesday night. And just a reminder for the public too, so we have a twenty-four hour notice we're required to give. That's given on the website, and it's the fine way to do it, so that'll be posted on the website. And then the one call, we're gonna do that the night when we spray.
Okay.
So it'll be in the afternoon, four or five o'clock.
Kind of a good reminder, app, the website posted.
Alright, okay. And then, uh, Centennial Drive, that was paved, I think since we last met, and then it's shoulder also.
Is that the bill for staying here for three thousand, except that's.
Yep, most of it is a shoulder, yeah.
So I can verify.
And then, um, Mike, Kerry, myself could attend the Minnesota Power Annual Municipal Meeting on Thursday. And just got a reminder from them of the fixed generation capacity charge that we can replace up until the end of twenty eighteen. Which makes up about fifty-five percent of our normal bill, is gonna be fixed. And then the other portion of that, a larger portion of that is energy charge, and a lot of that energy charge is looking pretty stable. So we shouldn't see a lot of fluctuations in prices again this coming years. Got some good information on transformer inventory, just some other sort of mapping, I have a gentleman in the mapping department. Talk about GIS and kind of how their system is set up, and I think we can piggyback on that system pretty well and get some good maps for our locators, and just the inventory controls.
Bob has a, we have, well, Bob has a list already of what he has worked on transformers in the past, so we have a grocery or inventory list already started, but it's not all of them, and at some point we need to, they suggested that we highly get on board with that, because the EBA is looking at transformers that have the old, but also PCBs. So I think we're in line, I mean, we'll bring them down at some point, we can, you know, it's not all that expensive to get on that system with them, but it would be, you know, I think we can overlap mapping, and maybe at that point also talk to Ripso, and maybe piggyback together and put everything on a map that's good for them and us, and I think it would be a smart move, although at some point we're gonna have to talk to them too.
Just even from a safety standpoint, on an ordered situation, the lineman, middle of the night, they can see what direction of power is coming from, isolate areas, and just be safe for the man who's, yeah.
Sounds a lot quicker.
And quicker, yeah.
Absolutely.
Something like that.
Thanks Bobby. Daniel?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Evening.
Good evening. Um, we just recorded the, uh, opening numbers, we're good, we scraped out our best year so far, last was our best open, and we, we passed that by a little bit, um, memberships are up, um, about eight more than we've had. Twelve more than last year, but the last eight years, this is the most memberships we've had. Uh, camping was good, before the weekend, I didn't have to send anybody home, so that's why, I think, numbers are pretty much right up there, most memberships, the campings, uh, it was good, we had a baseball tournament town this weekend, and we're, we, uh, we're sold out the camp, and all for that too. Um, everything else is running smooth, and I think, uh, you know, one more hiring, I'd like to hire, and I feel it will be set for the summer. Um, Alex Poster, who's on the golf team, knows the golf course, and ready to, uh, ready to start work, so if I could, uh, get permission to hire Alex, uh, Poster. Outside, outside. Outside, grounds crew, for three to four days a week, twenty-five to thirty hours a week, till school starts.
So, had a chance to, uh, just work with him a little bit a couple weeks ago, doing some volunteer work, and, um, seems like a good kid.
Yeah, so, that's.
Nice start is, is we could have it for three years.
Yeah, could be nice too.
We will need a motion to, uh, have him hired.
Make a motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike, what was the salary on that, Daniel, do you remember? I'll submit a.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Don, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Daniel. Uh, Scott, City Administrator.
Alright, I do have one thing that some of you are aware of, um, one of the hardest things I had to do in my young professional career is to redesign for the city of Piers, so, with that being said, I would like.
I get them with them, have a boss, so.
On behalf, um, so, to the city of Piers, I'd like to announce, please accept this formal notification that I will be leaving the city of Piers. I am grateful for the opportunity that I've had, working with the city and the community during these last few years. This doesn't usually go on a resignation letter, but I also want to add that the city of Piers has well-respected employees with a strong community, and moving forward, the city will continue to grow, and I want people to know that, um, because there's always question about things, so, grow in a positive way. I submitted my resignation on the seventh, so as of the twenty-first, that will be completed with the city. And I would like to thank the city and for sure the employees for my time spent here at the city.
Well, um, the reason I threw that paper at Scott is because I'm, uh, I'm disappointed, um, that we're losing a city administrator, we're also losing a very good employee, and I think everybody who comes into contact with Scott realizes that we wasn't a good person. And, um, it's not easy to replace that, um, so, um, just from my end, I'd like to say, um, congratulations on your endeavors, you know, you'll do well, and, uh, yeah, we're gonna miss you. So, thanks Scott for everything, thank you, you've been a huge asset to me.
Read your first line again.
Yeah, 'cause if we don't do what you asked me to.
What's the first line say? I don't, so.
I don't either.
You're done, you're on here, I'm not accepting, I don't know about you, I don't know.
Um, you guys wanna, we should kinda.
I, yes.
Want to do?
I hope to be.
Yeah. Um, before,
if we watch Scott walk into this job with what, one, two months as a deputy clerk, yeah.
Uh, two weeks.
Or two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks, yeah.
Uh, you really picked up, did a fine job, uh, you are gonna be missed by council and residents and employees. You did, you've come a long way, you've learned a lot of things, and, and, uh, pretty proud of it, I mean, I think you did a hell of a job for us. I don't want to accept your resignation either, but maybe there's a, down the road, there might be a chance, you never know, did you? We, uh, could hire you back, you know? Like the sign-on bonus, or?
Definitely have to talk about a wage decrease.
No, like I said, it was one of the hardest decisions I had to make, but due to specific reasons, I had to make the decision and to.
Will you be able to help us out somewhat in the interim here until we get somebody on board?
Yes, I think that would only be fair, um, but also just to the simple fact of the projects that we have gone and the passion that I've put into them. I don't want to see them fail or not succeed, um, so, I think we can work out some detailed things and just.
Yeah, what I'd like the, the council to look at after we accept or decline Scott's resignation, we can, we can talk about, um, some other things, but what, but I guess what I'd like to give the council a heads up on at this point in time is, what I would like to do is try and to hire Scott on an hourly basis. Number one, I'd like to see him help us hire a new city administrator, number two, I would also like to see him, um, I mean, we're, like you said, we've got a lot of stuff going on, and especially right now when we're trying to get into the budget cycle for next year, it's a pain, um, I think we'd all realize that, and we won't throw it every year, so, I, you know, I'd like him to help out a few hours here and there, so I'd like to get him on a contract type basis, or however we have to do that in order to keep him up.
It's a good idea to help, uh, through the hiring process and be on the interview committee, I would like that too.
We should go forward with that part of it as soon as we can, and get it posted, and get it everything.
Yeah, yeah, well, first of all, um, we will need a motion to approve Scott's. Yeah, yeah, well, first of all, um, we will need a motion to approve Scott's resignation.
I'm not making it.
I don't care which one you want, you're the chair of a bunch of.
Well, I could make a motion in a positive way, and I can vote in other ways. I make a motion to accept Scott's resignation.
There is a motion on the floor, can I get a second please?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Gina Alboz in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye.
Was that the other?
Opposed to. I'm voting tonight, I don't know.
Make sure you get the tally on that right, Scott. Motion carried, um, going into that, I, I guess we need council approval to, um, keep Scott on, and, and we haven't talked about.
I have a motion to hire Scott on as a consultant, when you use that word, you can charge us more. Just thought I'd throw that out there for you, okay?
Well, and, and I don't know if this is fair or not, Scott, and also probably not the place to be, to be doing this, but you're gonna have to sit down and, and figure out, I mean, you've got your wages and, and your benefits and things that you charge, you know.
I, I make a motion that we have the, the finance committee work with Scott on a, a wage for his hours that he would consult and works for us, that's my full motion.
Okay, and you guys are okay with us moving forward with that?
You gotta see if we vote, you gotta see if we.
I'll approve mine, okay, there's a motion on the floor by Stephanie, I second, seconded by Mike Alboz in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously.
So your last day, Scott, full time, or on, um, what'd be your twenty-first, next Tuesday?
Scott, when you started, Anna had put into the calendar everything, all the things that were due on certain dates, is that still there, does it carry you from your years, that inspired your last year?
It does, you've added a lot, there's a lot more.
But you still have it on the calendar?
Correct, and plus a lot more.
We can get together as an employment committee and, and, um, try and go whatever's gonna be easier or easiest, and Scott will be able to help us out with that, how, how to transition to the next person. Um, we will need to approve the posting as well, uh, to hire for that new position, I believe we have to post for about, about two weeks, is that right? Does the council wanna try to go a little longer, just get more applicants for the position or?
Does the council or other cities will also put stuff on the league?
Yeah, hopefully, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll advertise on the league and in the record, and, um, what else is there?
You do say phone, writer?
Yeah.
Papers, I don't know, I don't, oh, we did a.
I think we get a lot of response from League of Minnesota Cities website.
I think the league would be.
I mean, that and the local paper, I think, is our best.
So let's work on getting that out ASAP, I don't know if, uh, you guys are available for a couple minutes, um, sometime tomorrow to run through this with Scott, um, or if Scott just pulls the initial one, and tomorrow, first thing, and what we can do is try and get together over the next day or, or two, and come up with the, hack our job description, call it other stuff, so if somebody asks for that, or we can post about, I don't know, we wanna do that.
We should have a job description. I made one there. I make a motion that we post for a new city administrator.
There's a motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Don, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously, thanks again, Scott.
Thank you.
Um, Treasurers' Report.
The closing check of balance on May thirty-first was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred ten dollars and eighty-five cents.
Get a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Gina.
Second.
Seconded by Mike Alboz in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously. Clans, we got some bills to pay, uh, Scott handed off, he had some additions, we handed over the, for the three folks. If there's any questions, if not, we need a motion to pay the bill at a total worth of a month of two hundred and twelve thousand seven twenty-two twenty-seven.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Don.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Alboz in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously. Anybody have anything else? Is there room coming up here?
It's amazing, we're pretty busy, two girls are gonna have to step up to the plate a little bit. We're, I'd second Scotty's brain's drive, Scotty's here for the next week now.
We have his cell now, he's not going anywhere.
He just won't answer.
He's not going anywhere.
We only have one tour.
I make a motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike to adjourn, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donny Alboz in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously, thank you, I'll be on the other way, buddy.